Nobody, nobody, not fish. Hey, I done seen y'all once today, I'm not gonna play that game.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you today?
Are you the one that retired? Are you the one they are retiring? Oh, okay, good, good.
Good evening, everyone, on behalf of the Moorehead City Council, it's 5:30, we're gonna call a meeting. So, and I get people to come everybody on the same time now, we all have watches and smartphones. And so, we can't, can't start a little earlier than the late anymore. Uh, but it is a pleasure to welcome everybody here, so we did people's business in Moorehead City. And just a little bit of housekeeping, if I could ask, remind everybody just to turn your phones off. Full silent airplane mode or something, uh, if not, we just love others over here. Again, it's pleasure and hope everybody can stay in group somewhere, here at the thing out. Although we have air condition, there were a lot of people on community without air condition. Uh, keep doing your prayers, I'm close up in them right now, broken up without air condition. I understand, but we can have much choice back there. Alright, um, again, thank you for being here, if I could, maybe I should ask Councilmember George to leave for the invitation.
Best friend. Dear and Fatherly, thank you for this day and for the many blessings you provide to us. We're grateful for the many good things that are happening in the city with all love of Moorehead City. Thank you for everyone who was here tonight to be a part of our monthly council meeting. I pray for Mayor Jones, our council, who have been elected, sir. Give us your direction and guidance to make the best decisions as we govern our city. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all our employees, we pray your blessing and protection upon them and their families. I pray for peace, love, and protection for this great country you have blessed us with. In the name of Jesus, I pray.
Amen.
I'm asking now if you rise and join us in the prayer allegiance.
I pray with reasons to the fire, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, City. First item on the agenda is a presentation of Resolution 2024 dash R38. An appreciation through Lieutenant Dean Guthrie upon his retirement from the Moorehead City Police Department. And, uh, on behalf of Moorehead City and the Moorehead City Council, we always take pride and honor and recognize in our employees, um, whatever department, and whatever duties they have throughout Moorehead City. That's what makes Moorehead City who we are, that's our identity, as the people that work here, the people that give back to their community. So, if I could ask Lieutenant Dean to come forward, make me the center, and whoever else he would like to bring up with him. And Dean, I tell you, you're out of uniform.
Yeah.
Congratulations on being out of uniform. Let us see right over here. You've got the young lady there taking pictures, but, uh, it's all good, you don't feel bad over here with me. It's all good. It's, it's, uh, but no, this is an honor to recognize Dean in his, his almost twenty years with the town of Moorehead City. And he, with his law enforcement, and, uh, when I met Dean, uh, eighteen, nineteen years ago, um, I could tell right then, he was a good person. I didn't know about his policing, uh, community service abilities yet, but I knew he was a good person just from the end I met him. You alright?
Yeah. We're right here.
Yeah, let's get it, we're right there, okay. And, uh, but we've got, we grew to know each other, and, and I learned a long time ago, policing isn't about just going out there and catching bad people. Policing is about education, it's about, it's about teaching these people, it's, it's about... It's like your parents say, uh, don't, you know, do, don't do as I, uh, this, excuse me. Yeah, rewind on that one, but, but, you know, yeah, do what I say, not as I do, but, but he walked the walk and Dean talked the talk. And that's what I was so proud of Dean back then. And, uh, when, when you think about community policing, um, you think about your neighbors, you think about your family, you think about everybody that you associate with, lady, with, that, that, and throughout your career. And, and you made those people feel good, and that's what Dean did, when he met people, now, he knew he was a, he was a pretty big guy. So, they, they knew he was a man of authority and, uh, and a position with his uniform on. But he also made you feel comfortable and, um, and, and did a lot more than just, just arrest bad people and give out tickets. He, he was a part of the community, he gave back to the community, and, um, and he made Moorehead City a better place because of that. So, on behalf of Moorehead City, it's definitely an honor by to, to present this resolution of appreciation to Lieutenant Dean Guthrie upon his retirement from the Moorehead City Police Department. And whereas the town of Moorehead City desires to recognize and honor employees of the town for dedicated and distinguished contributions to the community. And whereas Dean Guthrie retired from the Moorehead City Police Department on June 1st, 2024, with more than eighteen years of faithful service to the town, and twenty-five years of service in the North Carolina Retirement System, having previously worked for the Carter County Sheriff's Office, the Newport Police Department, and the North Carolina Department of Corrections. And whereas Dean Guthrie began his career with the Moorehead City Police Department on November 23rd, 2005, as police officer two, and was promoted to sergeant on February the 28th, 2008, and promoted to lieutenant on February the 7th, 2013. And whereas Dean Guthrie's commitment to his profession inspired him to earn a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice from the East Carolina University, and earned the honor of becoming a three-time recipient of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award as the top DWI enforcer for his agency. And whereas during his tenure with the Moorehead City Police Department, Dean Guthrie served in the Patrol Division, Crime Prevention and Special Operations Division, as a training coordinator and general instructor. And whereas Dean Guthrie's selfless dedication to his profession made the town of Moorehead City a safer place to work, live, and play. Now, there, be resolved by the Council of the Town of Moorehead City, an appreciation be signed, shown to Lieutenant Dean Guthrie, in honor of his loyal service and dedication to the citizens of Moorehead City. And we urge all to extend congratulations to him upon his retirement, with many years left of serving the community, however you see fit.
Appreciate you.
Alright, any other questions?
Just enjoy working here, enjoy the people, and just pay them, if they did, it's good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We've got a few more things for Dean. His weapon retired with along with his badge, and he's got several of his badges in there. Of course, this is his weapon as well, he's retiring with it, so, um, we got more loot, so I'm just gonna set this down here for you, and we'll show you in a minute. This is us recognizing, and the city at large recognizing, we also, uh, speak as accomplishments to the state. And, and this is the Old North State Award for dedication and service beyond expectation and excellence to the great state of North Carolina. On behalf of the citizens of the state, I bestow upon Dean Brian Guthrie the Old North State Award, and it's signed by Governor Cooper, so there's that for you as well, sir. As a new lieutenant, Dean was my new sergeant, um, and, and from that day to, to his last, he's, he's, uh, uh, made an impression upon me and made this department better.
He's glad.
And, um, and he was always wanting to get the job done, no matter what you asked him. And, but he also recognized all the hardships that we encountered, and so, uh, he also had a touch of levity, or kept it as light as he could. Uh, we would play a game with the guys, so we, word of the day in the dictionary, you got points. If you could use it for report or the radio, without getting in trouble. And, uh, if you lost points, if you got your marri in trouble. And so, and as things continued, he kept that up, and he had, you know, gets people to tell jokes, or, uh, uh...
Or 80's rap.
I was gonna say, give a few bars from 80's rap, just to keep that, uh, life part in this, and, so, so being able to balance those both is, is a great talent, so, I truly appreciate it. Dean Guthrie, a buck.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the, uh, mic's not on. And when I will speak, uh, let me see, I haven't got it on. I was gonna get it turned off earlier. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of a consent agenda, consideration of adoption of a consent agenda. These are items that's been through our committee, uh, more and more like housekeeping items, and they've been recommended to be presented on the, uh, agenda to, to be, uh, adopted under one motion, although we can, with the council control of, uh, any individual, uh, discussion if necessary. So, with that, I would ask if there are motions to adopt. Mayor Jones, I'm making a motion to adopt this consent agenda. No, second. Motion made by Councilmember Lee, seconded by Councilmember Bill. Any further discussion on the motion? On the third motion, if you can raise your hand, unanimous. The next item on the agenda is consider the adoption of ordinance 2024 dash 006, approving the nonparticular transportation of Big Rock 35 Highway 70. Sandy, there you are. And before Sandy, I recognize Sandy, our planning director, with the head of another public area.
Uh, this annexation petition is from Curtis Dean Wagoner, for satellite annexation of approximately two acres located at Highway 70 in the cave road. Uh, the addition of the satellite property will not exceed ten percent of primary corporate limits. Water and sewer are proposed to be accessed from Highway 70, and costs associated with extending utilities to the site will be the responsibility of the property owner. Approximately forty-two hundred dollars in tax revenue would be generated. Uh, the site is not part of a subdivision, so will not fragment the subdivision. And notice of the public hearing was published in the Cary County News Times, on the city's website, on bulletin boards in the city hall, and notice was published on the property as well.
Thank you, Sandy. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak, just over here?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Ron, all persons in the neighborhood of Moorehead City. Uh, we're representing advocates tonight. Uh, in retrospect, we request the uncontiguous annexation. Uh, they'd like to improve that, that site, and, uh, make sense of that investment in that corner to do that. Uh, they've come into the city, and they're allowing the water sewer source to the other, uh, aspects of town services, uh, or what they needed at this location. And, um, that could be a good addition to the town. And, um, if I can answer any questions, we'll let it track.
Thank you, Ron, if you have any questions, Ron. Alright, thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak, reference this, uh, annexation request? Okay, anyone else speaking? All the gears are now closed. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024, 006, approving the nonparticular annexation of Big Rock 35 Highway 70, and a pin number as presented. My mic's not on. I'm taking it. Motion by George, seconded by Lee. Any further discussion on the motion? On the third motion, if you can raise your hand, unanimous. We've had all of our public hearings, and the next item is old business, is the adopt ordinance 2024 dash 10, um, adding articles in, or abandoning the terrible vessels that are mooring in Akron, and discharging them in the city waters out in the forefront, um, to the chapter traffic and motor vehicles of the town of Moorehead City, to the ordinance system. Who is presenting this?
Oh. Councilmember, this consists of two aspects, and the first is propose to clear the waterways, and the second is to address the issues of deuce and such vessel treatment in the channel, becoming a threat to extorts and discharging of waste into underwater mess for addressing diesel within disorders or potential, and various somers of those that are used for abandoned roadway and vehicles. This is the second reading, I'm over here, your second reading of this, staff, if there are any questions that you have, this would get adopted and actually considered below you, include this matter and place it into our hands of staff for subject enforcement.
This is a good move, we've been working on this for many years, a long time, well done. Okay, any more new motions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2024 00 dash 10, approve the additional article 10, entitled, "Abandoning, Burying, Derr, Dussel, Mooring, Acre, Discharging in City Waters, Chapter 3, Over Traffic and Motor Vehicle, In Our Federal Order."
I'll second that, please.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Richard. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, if you can raise your hand, unanimous. Alright, that includes old business, uh, now we're in the new business, item six A, which is something else we've been working on for years. And, uh, and needed, and this is to consider approval of the fire station on a reconstruction and contract subject in the city attorney's approval, with a contingency panel?
Yes, sir. And we had a special meeting on this, and this is just kind of, again, I would like the council to consider, uh, in the, in awarding the project cost of this, so that we can see funding for the rest of it, as y'all, as council members. We have a two million dollar grant, you mean grant from state, for part of it, and the rest of it, this is a design deal contract. We had a cost to get us through the concept, which we have come through and, uh, discussed at our special meeting. This just ends that contract with the full bill price.
So, this is just a proven construction contract with a total cost?
Total cost of the project.
Of the whole project?
Yes, which is low, we have got two million. They were in the total, the total cost. The total cost is six point nine billion dollars, minus, minus two million, that's the cost of the town.
Certainly a project that we all are proud of, and, you know, cheap way it was decided, the rest is staff, and, uh, it's gonna be great for Moorehead City, especially the, the west end of Moorehead, which has, uh, seen a lot of growth in the last several years, and we're gonna continue to see a lot of growth, so it's vital that, uh, we move forward with this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Now, motion?
I move that we approve the construction contract for Fire Station 3, subject to the city attorney's approval and approve the total cost of the project at six point nine minus the state contribution to the contingent upon LGC financing.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Lee. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
I'm sitting around for a while.
Is that right there?
Yes, sir.
Six D, consider the award of design deal contract for the Big Rock Stadium renovation project.
Again, we got a two million dollar grant for Big Rock Stadium, and, um, so we put out our Qs, along with, uh, the help of rental engineers. We received our huge free firms, Hudson Brothers Construction, Engels of Architecture, Bobbit Construction, and Mann and Sports Construction. We interviewed all the firms, would like to recommend award this contract to Bobbit Construction. Uh, we feel that they are big enough to, more than handle this project, yet local enough to be here, should we need something, uh, in the future. They have a great hand in municipal deals, and, um, it's just, it's gonna be slammed on, um, on, that's never a score. Anyway, so, uh, we would like to award Bobbit Construction that, to be the design deal.
May I make a motion that we, uh, award the design deal contract for Big Rock Stadium renovation project to Bobbit Construction? Motion by George?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Richard. And any further discussion on the, uh, Big Rock Stadium renovation project? All in favor? Unanimous. Let's move on, I'll consider award of a concept design work for the recreation center expansion project, uh, this is one down on 16th Street. And, uh, so this is not actually awarding a construction, a build right now, a concept.
Correct, each one of these projects are kind of in a different stage, we just awarded, uh, to Bobbit, the, the work, and then we, we've gotten out of this conceptual, um, with Fire Station 3, and so, for the recreation center expansion at the WS King Building, we awarded it last month to Daniels and Daniels, it's the firm, they've got together, they have sent us a contract over, uh, for, and what this will do will take us through concept. So, they will do, um, public engagement, working with our Parks and Rec staff, Parks and Advisory Board, and bring council some options for what we want to do there. This is not, this is not the actual tour plan, this is not the build of the thing, it is to give you three options, is what I'm specifically asking for. So, to do that, we gotta pay them to design and do stuff, so this will be an award of seventy-five thousand dollars, just a contract, to get it through the design process, and with that, it will be the deliverable to the council will be option A, B, C, good, better, best, small, medium, large, whatever you wanna, everyone wanna label that, but that'll be some options for y'all to get involved and make a decision.
Can I ask you a question? What is the, what, what is the usual timeframe for them to, to, uh, get back with us as far as the concept?
We have a time schedule in there, don't we?
Yes, there's a timeframe in the contract. I think there's, yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've covered a number, just for a quick turn.
There'll be this, this calendar here, yeah. Okay?
Not any other question, is there a motion?
I move that we award the concept, uh, design cost of seventy-five thousand to Daniels and Daniel Construction for the Recreation Center expansion project. And then I'll make that second amendment, as a second step, or would you rather combine it with one here?
The six D?
Yeah.
The six C.
C, yeah. Oh, you're talking about both budget ordinance?
Both of the, uh...
Yeah, yeah, just, just do them all under one item, do better than others.
Continually, I would also recommend approval of budget ordinance of them in 2024 dash 10 and 2024 dash 18 to a project or accept funds for the recreation center expansion as well.
Alright, second. And then, again, by Bill, seconded by George. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, uh, I am six D, consider adoption of budget ordinance of them in 2024 dash 19 and governmental capital project budget ordinance 2024 dash 20.
These two, um, budget ordinance are for some padding that needs to be done at the recreation center inside the junk, the Big Rock courts. Um, the quote, or estimate is about thirty-three thousand, so, you know, we still have to go and get, um, three estimates after this. So, the two budget ordinances are, for the first one, 2024-19, is request to take... So, the two budget ordinances are, the first one, twenty twenty-four nineteen is request to take um, thirty-three thousand dollars to the contingency. And transfer that to the governmental capital project fund. And twenty twenty-four dash twenty is to organize that thirty-three thousand coming in to the governmental capital project fund and actually purchasing the padding for that gymnasium. And this is um, prevent some other possible injuries to citizens.
Any questions for Jewel?
We had some thoughts about, all about this Mary Jones, and feel like thirty-three thousand dollars to keep our citizens safe that are utilizing the gym as well working, so thank you.
Is that a motion?
Y'all go ahead and make a motion. To consider the adoption of budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. And governmental capital project budget ordinance amendment, amendment twenty twenty-four dash twenty. To take thirty-three thousand dollars from our contingency and put it towards our, put it to our governmental capital project.
So you can do the motion, that should be my lead, speaker. Second by George. Any other discussion? On the favor? Unanimous. Okay, item six A, this has blown up at one of our previous meetings about discussion of naming the board of city radio island bridge. I know the city manager does research on that.
If central place is uh, in the package of road bridge or ferry naming or designation from NCDOT. This uh, was held in discussion at the last subcommittee, actually two subcommittees ago. Um, just circling the conversation back, this is pursuant to a general statute that already exists and prescribed the methodology. And how we as a municipality can or cannot name an NCDOT piece of infrastructure. In short, I will not belabor you by reading all of this, I'll give you the thirty thousand foot synopsis. When a municipality local government considers naming with an individual name, not a group name, not a, a name of. I want to memorialize all truck drivers across Long Island, it must be an individual name. This is governed by NCDOT, and they have a naming board. Um, it tells local governments, counties, and municipalities, cities, here's the prescribed method for how you do that thing. When an asset, a bridge, is shared between a municipality and a county or two municipalities, both municipalities must unanimously vote for the name to the place. And that must be forwarded to the naming board of NCDOT. Naming board of NCDOT has some additional concepts in there that they require. Individual, if we are, if we're memorializing Richard Abel as a law enforcement officer. That name goes through a background check from NCDOT dot us. After both municipalities, the county, city, city, city unanimously adopt and forward that to the naming board. The naming board then must say that after that, that facts forward, some additional concepts, it goes to the, the board of trustees for NCDOT. They must unanimously say yes, and then it comes back to both municipalities and local counties to execute that function. So with that, we brought that information to the subcommittee. The conversation we had was, and the instructions, if you don't get it right, um, to name uh, the new board of river bridge. In honor of either following officers or the law enforcement memorial bridge, did I get that right?
Yes, officer down memorial.
So, prescriptively, that name would generally not qualify to go forward. And then after that, if it was a named individual, we have a longer tail approach for what we can and cannot do. With finding the county to concur with us unanimously if you're willing to put on it. That's all the information I have, we've had that set before you, we wanted to bring that back, we're discussing the subcommittee with no recommendation for action. Because of the ideology doesn't really satisfy NCDOT's prescription for naming that bridge at that site. All right.
And the purpose of this statement denied is for discussion, the city council wants to pursue it.
The, I don't, obviously I don't have a problem with doing something like that, but I, I guess, and I don't need to direct this to um, Mr. Mayor. But obviously, in the future, they're gonna be replacing that bridge. Would that name follow that, or is that said, brand the bridge, and then you would have to go through what I want to read?
Man, I'm first up to tell you what I don't know, guess what, I don't know. I'll be honest with you, um, I don't, I would not dare assume because of NCDOT, and I've learned my lessons from other municipalities and local government, I don't assume with NCDOT. I can find out for you if you like, uh, it's a great question, I can ask the digital engineer Jeremy's crowd. We're in some additional conversations now, I'd be happy to do that. Prescriptively, I don't think it's gonna change, I know it's not gonna change, the rubric for how to go forward with naming it, I'll follow that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this was something that uh, was on my heart for, it's probably been over several years now, with all the tension in, in the country between law enforcement and then. You know, uh, different places, like citizens of different places, like St. Louis, uh, the George Floyd incident. I have a profound appreciation for our law enforcement, and this is something where I feel like it would be good for, for Morehead City to go forth with. Understand that uh, we have to name it after somebody correct. And if we could just brainstorm uh, other names, and just, just don't go to the wayside, or kind of leave it on the table and see if we can um, come up with another name. Um, I just wanna honor our law enforcement, uh, Councilman Abel, served for thirty years uh, in our police department. This, this will be a reminder for all people who cross the New Ford River Bridge, going from Morehead City to Radio Island, and both. They will be reminded of the sacrifice that our, our police officers make every day, and for the ones who lost their lives in the line of duty. I know we don't have those, those tragedies that happen a lot in Carter County. But um, it will be a profound reminder to our, to our, not only our citizens, but our tours that come to this area. That it be a reminder of the sacrifice that our law enforcement officers make, not just in Carter County and Morehead City, but all of the country.
Counselor, ain't there a monument or a memorial?
Yeah, at the college there. If there is a monument or a memorial, a garden area.
Yeah, at, at fifty uh, college in Burnham, the basic law enforcement training facility, there is a monument there, uh, for, I guess, probably the officer named Mortal. There's quite a few names on there now. When you think about officers being killed in line of duty, you know what you think, they were in a car accident. And we've only had a few here in Carter County, Donner Eric, where uh, and I think the very first one was back in the sixties, I think. Uh, was a, a state trooper. Uh, Trooper Smith, Jay Smith's father, was, was killed in an accident uh, on highway one oh one in a bridge accident. We had a um, detective from Clinton Police Department, I believe it was Clinton, back in the eighties, that was working undercover down here. He was actually shot in the line of duty. Uh, so, and we had a number of officers, don't get me wrong, that have died on duty, but health reasons, this, that, the other. And another one that comes to mind is officer that actually worked in Morehead, that actually wound up leaving Morehead, worked with the Sheriff's Department. And transferred out to Tennessee, and he also died during a run, in a car accident, uh, responding to a domestic uh, out of Tennessee. And of course, his parents still live uh, here in Carter County, so it's, it's, it's certainly worth, worthwhile. Um, uh, to, to pursue whatever, I'm not opposed to the name back to Richard, no, I'm joking. But a little bit. But uh, I, I don't think we need to uh, to give up on it quite yet, so I, and I think, yeah, I agree with Lee. That name is kind of flawed anyhow, I don't have any to fit that on the side, that you can read it anyhow. But uh, I think at some point we could come up with something that, that someone should uh, that we, we.
I would certainly suggest opening up for the community, to provide, suggest yours versus suggest the council. Uh, I think that certainly people know a broader group of people, and I think we'll have a more candidate.
That's great.
And Councilman Abel was right, in the college, in the community college, they have a reminder, but uh, unless you, somebody told you about it, or, or you find out through uh, websites or media. Uh, some people don't, they're not aware of the monument, I feel like renaming the bridge would be a constant reminder for motorists that travel through. Travel over our, our New Ford River Bridge, a constant reminder that uh, law enforcement, they put their lives on the line every single day. Not knowing whether they're gonna come home to their families or not, and um, we're just gonna show our appreciation as a, as a municipality.
Chris has a question. Does he, uh, let me create a couple more?
Uh, the short answer would be, I have a short term agreement, no, it's not. Um, just as a kind reminder, education proposal, this, this question to me, as a reminder, takes two local government authorities, unanimous to say yes. So if your good intentions could be here, here only, so it would take your uh, pure bodies in Carter County, depending upon the asset you have.
If I can add a recommendation that we, I think it's very honorable to pursue, uh, to recognize the following officers, it's, it's something that the city would uh, take on. If we want to do something like that, dedicate an area on the side of the highway that we recognize these following officers. Without a whole lot of trouble. For advertisements, I can joke with that. Anyway, thank you for the information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for, thank you to the officers, Lee, and thank you for the information. And the discussions. Six F, governing body appointments, park and recreation advisory boards, you've got one, two, three, four vacancies. Parks and Recreation Director, you got your name on the top, please, counsel.
So you should have an attendance with the updated agenda, or updated packet?
Yeah, if you'll just uh, kind of, we've got one, uh, which is Ms. Flores, a carer, a certain citizen of Morehead City, which is a standing seat there.
That's correct, she's the only one that don't apply double, in that category. And then we need one ETJ, and then um, additional in city.
Yeah, we need one in city.
Four in total.
Which we've had five out of five. For the one in city that expires uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And then we have another in city seat that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, is open. And then one ETJ seats.
Right, which is December twenty twenty-five.
There's four seats, that's right.
Yes, all right.
Yeah. I think they asked a question, and I think I'll have to answer, but I'll refer to our counsel for that. Uh, one is a, a um, one's a, an advisory board, and the other is a, not a board, a regulatory board, a planning board. And the question is, one of the names on here that's just been recommended, or hasn't just been appointed to the planning board, can he also serve down in the advisory board?
Yes.
Okay. Once you uh, cast your ballots, it'll pass it back down, and I'll tally them up. That's it. Every day, the sun went to the bottom. These ballots are moving, and the city, I'm here for anybody that owns, would like to review them, or they need to be. Not during the day, but in the evening, we had it for you. Why, because I have one tie, and I would like to get somebody else to help me canvass this, counsel, can you do that?
You, the clerk?
The clerk, clerk's time. This is the message. Let's please, let's see, we have this, we need people volunteering to this. It's pleased to say we have this, these many people volunteering today. It's a good problem, yeah. Okay, there we go. Confirmed. Conservatives in Morehead City representative would be Flori McArthur. For the in-city, we actually have a tie, we passed the ballots back out. And was Kaylee and Kaylin Dealer. And then for the in-city, seat expiring twenty twenty-five would be Luke Casanza, in name of official for the ETJ. So, and then he's back out, and if you would just vote this one to the two, on the in-city seat, the ones in the middle, between Alice and Kaylin.
I understand you understand the reason to set the vote. Some other way to mark it?
Yeah. Just mark it. Write your name down, first name. Got it? Very good, you write the first name down. And the final person to be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board would be Cayman. I recognize any motion to set these ballots. Said no. Made by Deal.
I'll say.
Sorry, my argument. All in favor? Operation ten, unanimous. City managers report.
Fortunately, it's gonna be a page and a half. What I'm talking about is still a little bit. Sure. Um, the page and a half is actually a lot of good news I need to share with you as city council, and the public, championing our city staff, the functions we've been doing the last couple of weeks, particularly with the end of year closing. Fiscal year closing hours underway, that's been exhausted work for cities, a heavy burden for our city staff, particularly finance and team of finance. Just to give you a glimpse of what that operations network entails, when you pass the budget, they have to close out that end of year fiscal operations and then begin to implement and start that cycle again for us. That's end of year reporting, end of year balancing, inventory counts, reconciliation, purchase orders, audit preparation, testing of audit controls, and the beginning of the year's capital requirements files. That's just a very, very small snippet of what Joel Lasseter and her full team along with every department began to do. So as we move through that, we always get good questions, sometimes about why did it take so long to do the thing in place once the budget's passed, especially with a city of our size. As much as I love to champion small cities, this is not a small city, particularly with the function of having thirty-five plus million dollars in operations and another thirty-two million in grants portfolio. Moving on, National Flood Insurance Program are very positive for citizens, and I know our public officials are championing this. I need to applaud the volunteers, particularly my wallet, our planning staff, Sandy Watkins. The NFIP class rating, we were at a class six, we went down to class five. You might think, that's bad, no, that's really good. So that class rating, the NFIP class rating for insurance premiums, that's a five, affords citizens a twenty-five percent discount. This little snapshot I'm giving you does not do justice to the amount of work saving for staff and done to push back on all of the metrics to award us that. So what does that look like in reality for those insurance premiums? If the average is seven hundred dollars for that twenty-five percent savings, give or take anywhere from a hundred and four hundred and fifty to ten to a hundred premium. So that's a champion to their work they're putting on in fact into our collective citizen pockets inside our cities, so bravo, bravo, bravo. For city staff for not giving up, particularly saving and pushing forward to make sure that NFIP class rating goes from six to a five. I think five last was twenty twenty. The last time you had a NFIP rating was twenty twenty, you proceeded at twenty percent discount.
Yes.
This one is now class five, and you're going to twenty-five percentage.
Seventeen.
Bravo to her team. I'm in with Senator Ted Budd's office, particularly Senator Schumay, he's the regional director since our second meeting as a legislative cohort, so we'd like to reconnect. In addition to our meeting, we had some conversation about federal funding needs and what the federal funds can do for us. As you've heard, the mayor and I've had discussion and kind of law with the city. The reason why federal state needs, we love to say, for a city to do the thing in place with the money we give you, is because we hear them, and we execute on those funds. Ted Budd's office and Senator Schumay are a great connection for us to have when we have concerns, when we have needs, and also, particularly with our grants portfolios and our federal funding, to have that connection. We need to pull the lever and ask for assistance from the federal government. Moving on, pleased to announce that we fill the purchasing manager position. Some of you have heard this committee's speech before, but I'll move even quicker. That purchasing manager is a critical hire, and it triggered me to remind and share with both citizens and you as city council, over the last two years, what the testament of the strength of Morehead City's staff is. I'm gonna read a list of names and hires in the last few years, and I ask you to find a commonality of these list of names. So with filling the purchasing manager position, that's Sarah Kerr, she's the former finance director from Atlantic Beach. In addition to that, in the last two years, Jessica Mayo, former Corret County Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. Tiffany Rigs, one of your former articles for PD Mayor's, and the Onwasa Finance Director for, eight years, seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen years, Tiffany Rigs. Sarah Curry, who I mentioned before, the former Atlantic Beach Finance Director, coming to our city, who represents the purchasing manager, purchasing manager. September Tunnel, Deputy Chief, September Tunnel. Former leader of West San Antonio Southside County, has senior command officer, she's right over my shoulder, if you can rely on me right now. Kelly Jones, she moved her book.
She's up.
She's up.
She was five.
Billy, your eyes need a little. Kelly Jones, former broker, community college grants manager, who's doing her civilian work, parenting work for us with that grants portfolio. Carrie Cooper, your deputy clerk, former part of County Government Department, but now is your deputy clerk. Lisa Jensen, former HR writer for Hogan Mills. Anna Smith, former MRIO, PIO, and New York PIO, as well as their clerk. And then lastly, an additional hire from Atlantic Beach, our Parks and Recreation Department. She, 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 what's the commonality, please? As Joel Lasseter said, they're smart. That's the commonality, smart ladies. Smart women. So I say that because you've heard me say the two best supervisors I've ever had have been females, one in my former lifetime to do what he does. As a ground city investigator, I've had one teach me the good ways of how to be a professional and just fill up the conference. September, he started to recruit, call me, in the instance of lifting up others before yourself. I would not be remiss, I would be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to champion, over the last few years, it's not me, it's you and this city to are hiring best-in-class female leaders for your city. And I wanted to take a moment to champion that. I'm extremely proud of them. Moving on, library staff training and operational updates, we get a self-pollination for library functions, recognize critical need. Some of you have heard that I apologize to library unit for us not leaning into their good in staff development and training. We found some areas that needed improvement, and I'll tell you that Tiffany, Jewel, and Leanne, as well as Daniel, have goofed them through some proper engagement, cash handling practices, procurement, and just general compliance in their city policy operations. We've benefited in favor with the library unit, and I'm proud of that unit, particularly, they're all part-time staffers, who are helping us find a good way forward with bringing them into compliance. City staff initiated construction projects, there's a list of them, I'll give you the brief list of several of them before and now, just to kind of give you an idea of the weight of what city staff is doing, particularly on Daniel's shoulders, as such as all departments. But his department in particular, Fire Station Three, Parks and Recreation renovation, the Fire Museum, Station Two, Little La France apparatus, the Water Carpet Shop in Fairbury Street, Big Rock Stadium renovation, Shepherd Street Stormwater, North Crump Street, City Stores, Municipal Campus here, Swordnail Torch, Eric Russ, and the Twentieth Street Stormwater Project, which expands from Twentieth Street to Twentieth Street. That's just a snapshot of the load they have, as I can demonstrate where we are with that. Moving on, Elijah's Landing closing, there's a big sigh relief here, and Kelly, and Leanne, and Jewel, about five other staff members. That HUD closing is complete, thus begins the next phase of work, as we look to make sure that that property finds a good level of closure as it wins for the city. And along with that list of very female employees, I cannot thank our city attorney enough. I'm glad you have him in-house, because had he been external, the cost of that would have been increased. So thankful to have him here. It's a lot for city fireworks success, if you paid attention to that, both myself and other city staff, particularly our Morehead City Fire Department and special events officer, were on site to make sure that that event went as well as possible. Knowing that our tenth street construction project is ongoing, I was pleased to see that the turnout for that was very heavy. In addition to that, we asked the vendor to extend fireworks celebration to the full twenty, twenty-five minutes. I have pretty negative feedback from that, all her was positives. I did want to champion Morehead City Police Department and our particular peers, they continued their proactive support in clearing the very high volume of traffic. Throughout the east-west corridor that we had until about ten fifty, ten fifty-five. Had the opportunity to watch them in action and listen to them in action, and when fireworks are done, their job is to get everyone home safely through a very narrow corridor. So bravo to our men and women who did that last year, almost every. The UDO public forum was last night, public forum number three. The forum was well attended, there were thirty to forty-seven odd people, I along with city staff had a great opportunity to connect with citizens regarding their questions and thoughts on the UDO Unified Development Order project. That's a twenty twenty-five deliverable, it's a year long. I failed last night to champion probably, again, Sandy Watkins, the first actually doesn't like it, but will do it anyway. Even though we have Chad, Meadows, and team from Code Right, who are the best in class assisting us through that, we would not be in a positive position if it were not for Sandy and her team. Along with that, a resounding thank you to them for making sure that forum was where received, our public information officer, putting the message out, and really the good engagement we have in that project through twenty twenty-five. If you haven't already, advancemoreheadcity.com, advancemoreheadcity.com, we watch that progress. That's transparent, teach the team, everything they do, we do, with the consultant, is applied there almost sometimes, the day of or the day after, we're actually functioning through those issues. Thank you as council for participating at the last couple of days and getting and gaining your feedback. That project, as I'm telling everyone, is a legacy generation project. Very rare in municipality where staff has an opportunity to go through the Unified Development Order project that will kind of conclude in twenty twenty-five with a photo rewrite of our code. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Chris, the insurance rate, how long is that being?
Seven of my ISOs, is the revow for NFIP would happen every five years?
It happens every five years, they were on a bit of a delay, it should be effective October first, and at least through twenty twenty-seven, we don't have confirmation of that, so.
Good, thank you, thank you for that. Sorry for the long-winded report, it's a lot of information we want to know on record and share with you and citizens, but thank you, mayor.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for recognizing staff, not all these, all these higher profile things we're doing, they have daily activities they have to take care of also, every day, keep track of them.
One more for mayor, the conditions of the mayor, so thanks to the deputy clerk for sitting in today, it's her first deputy clerk meeting, clerk meeting, so I can call it out. So one of those strong females is doing her first meeting today, under the guidance of Matty Clark, sitting in the corner watching all of them, make sure we look business. So thank you, Carrie, for that, and I apologize, mayor, so thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Andrew. Next on the agenda, the citizens' comments, this is the opportunity for any citizens to come up and make any comments, any requests in the seat now. Just ask, be respectful of the time, three minutes.
My name is William Ray, the other in Fort, in Fort Ten Friendly Road. This is in regards to the new development over at Galantis. I knew that Galantis apartment development would come eventually, I knew it would have been rezoned. I came and spoke here at that time with all of you, most of you, many of you, only to request that our privacy be preserved. We weren't against the project, we just wanted to keep our privacy and tranquility. Looking around at how all the other developments in our area had been done, we trusted that we would, it would keep some of the natural forest beauty at the screen. And I believe that the city would take steps to preserve at least some of the buffer between the two different types of zone properties. That was until July third, twenty twenty-four, when I came home from work to see the trees rip right out to the property land along our entire neighborhood. Instead of trust, belief in a beautiful neighborhood, I was suddenly confronted with a view that I had never imagined. What I now saw, at that time, were the tears in my wife, as the new reality of what we were looking at, what we're in for the next few years settled in. Given that the next day was July fourth, we had to wait a very long thirty-plus hours to talk to somebody at city hall. There we were told we missed the planning meetings, and we didn't know that their planning meetings had happened. And we'd missed our shot to even have a discussion, everything was done, signed, and approved. And that's when we got to look for plans. Trenches being dug on property lines, twenty-four unit buildings being built eighteen feet off residential properties. But those slight short property laws, I'm not an expert at reading plans, but, you know, we had traffic concerns, drainage concerns, light concerns, and a dog park that seemed kind of cramped in that we never expected. It was larger and more intrusive than we'd imagined, again, we were never against the project, ever. And it just keeps, seems to getting worse the more we learn. And even now, there's just, a lot of this, there's so much we don't know, we don't understand. And I can't understand how this project was approved the way it was, with no input from the people, and we're here with our neighbors here today, the people being impacted the most, and impacted, impacted we are. We're now figuring out how much this is gonna cost us just to get some privacy and peace from the construction itself for the next few years. Not to, you know, they were working on Saturday, so I'd imagine what Saturday's in the backyard of the family gonna look like with construction equipment right in front of us. Perhaps had there been more communication about the plans, had we at least had a chance to weigh in, had we had been given more information and the opportunity to prepare for this, have our questions answered, we might feel differently today. But I can speak for all of us, where I said we don't feel differently. And I just want to offer you all the opportunity to reopen the dialogue with our neighborhood, with the people that are here with today, see if we can figure out a way to swage our concerns. Hear, hear about us, maybe even look at our properties and see what happened, and see what's going on, and help us understand how we can begin to rebuild our neighborhood. And the, you know, the privacy and what we had, so I think.
Thank you, and Chris, we've got record of that, so.
Yes.
Hope we're good, there. Anybody else in the other side, please, council? Court first, give it to the clerk. Name and address, please.
My name is, sorry, my name's Ruth Roller, I live at Coroate Friendly Road. I had written out while I was gonna speak tonight, but it frankly was much longer than six minutes, so I figured I'd cut it short and I would give you a copy of what I was gonna say. So, you know, we showed a copy of that, along with pictures of what is done, being done behind our homes. With no notice from anyone, the town or the developer, the twenty-five foot tree bumper that was supposed to be maintained is gone, taking our quality of life, our privacy, and our property values down with the disappearing trees. taking our quality of life, our privacy, and our property values down with the disappearing trees. I understand that the state or the ordinance doesn't require notification to neighbors that Morehead City should be better than that. You can see in the one picture on top of the packet, all the buffers that retained were retained in the close developments right around us. Frankly, it doesn't matter why they were retained on the properties like that, but it's how you make the town beautiful and neighbors happy. It should be on the developer to make sure a buffer is kept intact on their property. You also have pictures of our backyard as it was, and now the way it looks, just so sad. And the development plan is in there showing our properties and, yeah, but they are so, were so heartbroken that our town council and planning board didn't stand up for us as young citizens, but gave all the leeway to the developers who are just looking after their own interests. We understand this plan was approved back in twenty twenty-three, so you may not have been involved with the approval. Also, I hear that the Unified Development Ordinance is being adjusted and revised to make it more about citizens' good than developers'. We urge you to make those reforms that will look out for our citizens' best interest, but what about us? Whether you approve this plan or not, now you have a chance to help rectify it. I urge you to drive down Friendly Road from Galantis. Would you want this in your backyard with no buffer? For the U D O, only a six-foot fence in near five or three line is required? What will that do to block views of three-story buildings and thirty-foot tall lights? Nothing. We implore you to try at least to reach out to developer on our behalf and work to get a wide tree buffer, fast growing trees, and it up immediately. Otherwise, we'll be dealing with the construction zone for the next three years and all the noise and dust that comes with it. After that, years of having to look at three-story buildings in our backyard and all the lights destroying pretty much our quality of life. Even if we wanted to sell it, we couldn't, who would want to pay a fair price for having a view like that and a privacy to boot? Very yet the development plans need, needs redone. We never even had a chance to look at the plans submitted before the planning board saw them, discussed them, and did them all in one evening. Not sure how long it took, you had the council to approve it, but it just feels like it was rushed through, and not, no thought was given to us, the property owners. I hope you pray three to the limits and don't throw them away, I hope they break your heart like this person ours.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience, please. Name and address, please.
My name's, oh, my girl. I dealt with exactly what they're doing. I live, um, on Heaven Street, I had condos built behind me. They cut down two of my live oak trees, um, they were this big around. Um, I was told they were worth between twenty and thirty thousand dollars apiece. The town of Morehead told me that I would have to sue the, um, people building those condos. Obviously, that's difficult, um, and, um, my, I think that the town needs to not just do what the, what the developers want. I mean, my heart goes out to these people because I dealt with all of it. As a matter of fact, I had so much water runoff because they cut down these trees that at one point in one of the rainstorms, not a hurricane, but a rainstorm, I had over four inches of water in my whole entire backyard. My grill in my backyard was in a one-foot hole because they quickly took out the stumps and their roots. The trees were so big that they were underneath my grill, and my grill was in a one-foot hole. They did patch that, and they built an eight-foot fence. So they can do an eight-foot fence instead of a set, that I do know. And I had plant trees on my side, it was, they had their property surveyed twice, and I was a hundred percent right, they did it all illegally, cutting down my trees. So my, my thoughts is, we need to do more as a town to protect the homeowners, their privacy, and all that, because I have spent thousands of dollars to get privacy again, so.
Thank you. Somebody else in the audience, please.
Thank you for coming out this evening, and, uh, sharing your concerns with us. This is a non-closed chapter, I have to look into it, make sure they're compliant with all the rules and regulations, and then it also will help us look in the future for better planning. Thank you, everyone.
Council comments, there's you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to echo what the, uh, city manager said earlier about the staff. Uh, they've done a tremendous job, I don't know if we're going to put our budget together, but, uh, obviously closing the, uh, this one year out. Uh, I would also like to, to say personally, um, I, I, I work at Carter Community College under Director of Security, Emergency, and Fairness out there. We had a concert out there last month, uh, biggest concert we've had, and this is the third year we've had, and, and obviously we couldn't have done it without the help of the town of Morehead, uh, police department, fire department, the street department, and, uh, it was very successful. We had over thirty-five hundred people there, so again, thank the, uh, the, the city and staff for that. The other thing I was going to mention, and that just hasn't fallen out of my mind, but anyhow, you go ahead, it's going to happen one day for you too. But anyhow, I would like to, to thank y'all for your comments, uh, they'll, they'll obviously be taken, so. Uh, but thank the rest of y'all for coming out for the, uh, the conference.
I appreciate it, Chris Turner's comment on our staff. I too have put down some notes to address the milestones that city has achieved, and milestones objectives in our planning and renovation of infrastructure process. The staff does a tremendous commitment. We have underway a new revision of the U D O that, uh, Mr. Turner has mentioned. It is absolutely incredible to have a successful U D O that is all-inclusive, and that includes citizens concerned, for citizens to show up and make their comments known. So please keep your eyes peeled on our website, and our newspaper, and make a diligent effort to come out and participate in the U D O process. There's many more things to go, now, all over by the staff. So please do that, it will help our staff tremendously. Thank you.
Want to say congratulations to Lieutenant Jean Guthrie, uh, for a successful career, and wish him and his wife well in retirement. Also want to thank our staff, uh, city manager Chris Turner, two assistant city managers, Daniel Williams, and Jewel Lassner, Sandy Watkins, and the rest of our staff for the excellent work they've done on our U D O rewrite, and working with, uh, Mr. Chad Meadows and his staff. And also, uh, I just want to dispel a rumor of, Mr. Turner hasn't received a merit increase, uh, without an evaluation. I had positive dialogue with, uh, Chris, I had positive dialogue with Councilman Taylor, and, uh, Mayor Protem Baloo about Chris's contract. Chris has no problem going through the evaluation process, um, we're going to do that. And also when we handed out those salary increases to our employees, one of the stipulations with Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there will be no cost of living adjustment, uh, for our staff. So Chris won't be receiving a cost of living adjustment. He's, um, in compliance with an evaluation, and we had great discussion about it. I think there were rumors out there that he's received a raise, or somebody might have misunderstood what I said at the last meeting, that he, um, received a raise without an evaluation, he hasn't received a raise yet, and he's in force of the evaluation. So want to thank Chris for that. Um, also want to thank, uh, Councilman Abell, Mayor Protem Baloo for bidding, uh, the renaming of the, uh, Newport River Bridge in their, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting, thank you guys for that. And also I want to add that, uh, me and Mayor Protem Baloo and, uh, Public Services Director Daniel Williams went out to Captain Davis Park. Um, we looked at, uh, several different locations to put proper signage up to honor, uh, Ms. Captain Davis and her memory. And I know that Mayor Protem George Baloo, he was adamant about us doing that to honor her life and her legs, so I just want to commend him for that. And, uh, thank you, good folks, for coming out and, and the city, city of Morehead, uh, uh, our citizens for always, uh, just expressing their concerns like these good folks did about any, uh, concerns the issue may have, and, uh, we're going to do our best to, uh, to address those issues. I just want to thank you guys for not being brave and showing courage to stand up and express your concerns about where you live, and we're all about improving the apartment life of our citizens, thank you.
Well, three of my councilmembers have already stowed my talking points, so that's okay. Um, I do want to thank everyone for being here tonight and for coming out, you know. Like Councilman Taylor did say, we are working on the U D O, I do encourage as many of our citizens that will that will come out, that will be on our website, and be on the lookout and be part of the discussion and the process. This is your city also, and it takes us all working together. I feel your concerns, I feel your pain, and, um, I thank you for taking time from your busy schedule to be here tonight to share. We hear you, we hear you, and, um, it will be followed up. Again, thank you all for being here, thank you for allowing me to serve you, and I hope everyone has a good evening.
I heard you, I guess we'll get to you, I understand what you're saying. I'm going to need to take another look at that. I was kind of surprised when I saw how they had, basically scouted your property over there, so. Other than that, I want to thank our staff, you always are doing a great job, I thank you. I also want to thank you all, the citizens for coming in and helping us do our job. So, thank you all for coming, have a good evening, enjoy this thing, cool.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other comment, and I know when I want to, but.
I remember that.
I want to do it anyhow. No, no, I did remember, and Lee took care of that about Jean. Uh, well, folks, some of y'all may not know this, but Anna, our public information officer does a tremendous job pushing information out. She's just about daily pushing something out, either on Facebook, Instagram, uh, Twitter, and plus she puts it on the, the website. Uh, so if you're not hooked into one of those, please do so, uh, I, 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 she does a tremendous job, so that's all I'm going to say.
She makes you look good, taking pictures too.
Well, we'll see.
Um, what I have this evening, um, it has been mentioned and I mentioned earlier, traditionally, we have always waited till after the approval of the budget before we have the management evaluation. It's always been till July or August, ever since I've been on the board, because during the budget cycle, it's just, um, it's full steam ahead with all the staff and a lot of overtime hours. And, uh, so now it's time to consider, uh, Chris's contract with us, with us every, a year now. And I'm going to pass out the, um, performance evaluation, and, uh, we can discuss when we want to turn the back end, turn back end today. And then when, when we want to have the evaluation, uh, we could call a special meeting, or we could just wait till, uh, August, our August meeting, and do the underflood session, and it probably will take some time, but whatever, whatever it feels like doing.
I'm a favorable, I'm a favorable mayor, we can just turn it maybe a week prior to our council meeting review, and then let's follow up at office meeting.
Yes, two to three weeks. And this is the same evaluation form that you use around the city.
Yes, sir. Well, first apartment heads, uh, remind me, and my wife will be upset if I didn't, uh, I'm not correcting the mayor, I've never corrected my mayor's degree, but, uh, she has placed me on loan to you for two years now, but I've been here two years.
Two years.
Please say a little bit.
Uh, can I, Mr. Mayor, is it possible that we could get this in either a PDF or a document? My, my handwriting is not the best in the world, but I didn't have.
I'm sure we have technology, we can definitely do that for you.
If I could request, I would love for Chris to, uh, put together a document reminding us of the results of his objectives during the last twelve months. I do not want to forget something that you should have credit for, uh, so I think it would be helpful for all of us to be reminded of what has transpired in the last month. Think you could do that in a week?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you all, everyone, Mayor, give them a, give an offer really? I will do that and submit that to council, uh.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item is in closed session, and a lot of them are closed sessions, I'm going to go ahead and read the advertisement. For North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, Title eleven, page one, to prevent disclosure of privileged information of the North Carolina General Statutes of Regulat- Regulation, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, uh, eleven, eight, three, to consult with the city attorney to protect the attorney's client privilege, and to consider and give instructions concerning judicial action title, Morehead City versus Stanley, and the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight, one eleven, eight, five, to instruct staff concerning the negotiation and price in terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property.
Certainly.
Motion, Mayor, by George. Thank you, my lead. Thank the motion, and there's your hand, it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, you're welcome to sit outside if you like, uh, we're going to close session. Yes, and, uh, yes, fire chief and fire marshal please, uh, with us, the first party presentation.